Alright. I don't see Mr. Yamas yet. There he is. Hail, hail, the gang's all here.
Yes, sir.
Alright, well, it's four o'clock and we're all here, so. Um, I'd like to welcome everyone to the adjourned city council meeting of April 5th, 2021. Temporary public comment email established with Celia Lasbannis can be sent to our city clerk via email cityclerk@lasbannis.org. Or you can drop it off or mail it to 520 J Street, addressed to the city clerk. It must be received by 4:00 PM of the day of the meeting to be read into the record. Chambers are closed to the public, you can watch it on the city's YouTube channel. So at this time, I will call the meeting to order at 4:01 PM and ask Acting City Manager Breezy to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, from which nation under the land. With liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Present.
Lambert.
Here.
Lewis. Councilmember Lewis.
Here, my cursor got lost.
Lamas.
Here.
Furia.
Here, we have a quorum. Next, we'll move on to item four, consideration of approval of the agenda. Cheryl Entainer, motion.
Mayor, Councilmember Lambert here.
Yes.
Want to make a motion that we approve the agenda?
Hey, I've motioned by Mr. Lambert, do I have a second?
Mayor, Councilmember Jones, I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion by Councilmember Lambert and a second by Councilmember Jones to approve the agenda as submitted. Roll call, Ms. Melanie.
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Yamas.
Yes.
Furia.
Yes, motion carried unanimously, agenda has been approved. Item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. The public may submit their comments by submitting a written statement and dropping it off at the utility payment box of City Hall by 20J Street by mail or by email at cityclerk@lasbannis.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the council meeting. Ms. Melanie, do we have any comments of the public, from the public?
I have received zero comments.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, we will close the public forum and move on to the city council priority workshop. And to that, we will go to Finance Director Williams.
Good afternoon, everybody. So let me just. Here we go, okay. Okay, good afternoon, everybody. As part of the budget review process for fiscal year 2022, the priorities workshop is an opportunity for the city council to reiterate its priorities with staff and discuss those priorities based on the resources and organizational capacity, including finances available to meet these priorities. So there is a lot of information. Please feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. I felt like the staff report was very detailed, so I'm gonna try to go through it at a little faster pace so we can get to the guts of the workshop, which is, the point is for council to obviously update the priorities as they see fit, so let's just jump right in if it will cooperate, okay? So today, the goals of the workshop are to identify what is important to our community. It is the council's priorities projects are not day-to-day operations, operating functions. Instead, they are projects that are significant and will enhance the fiscal and/or quality of life for the community. So that's what we want to take a look at and then additionally reviewing existing goals. Included in the staff report and on today's presentation are the priorities previously established by the city council throughout the years, whether they were in a separate workshop or maybe just through a regular city council meeting. And then we will also review the will review the goals or the priorities that were presented by staff and add any additional priorities that council might see fit. We will create new priorities and prioritize already existing project. So in order to do that, we'd have to review the city's operating costs and financial sustainability. So taking a look at this slide, what this slide is showing us is the annual operating surplus in this, in this case, so it's based on budgeted numbers, which you know are only estimates. And so this is for the current fiscal year, we're estimating to bring in a little over $20 million. This is the general fund, of course. We're expecting to spend $19.6 million, which gives us a general fund overall surplus of $519,000. But we want to subtract Measure H out of that, and the reason that we do that is because, as you know, Measure H is, even though it's a general fund revenue, it is still assigned for specific purposes, so those funds in, in a sense are restricted and they're only allowed to be spent according to the expenditure plan, so we back out that money because in essence, they, they already have a goal. So we're subtracting out the estimated surplus for Measure H, which is, which is $388,000, which leaves us an ongoing surplus of $130,000. And what this means to you is that for this current fiscal year, our revenues are actually coming in slightly higher than our expenditures, so we are in the black, which is always good, you always want to be in the black, of $130,000 for the year. Moving on to an overall view, which is what we have in the bank essentially, or our fund balance, our beginning fund balance at the beginning of the year was slightly over $15 million. However, the council decided to commit 2.1 million as part of the police financing that comes out of the general fund. And again, these Measure H funds that I discussed, this is 2.2 million, and what you'll see here is the first two years, so it was 610, a little over 620,000 for the year that we started, which was fiscal year 2019. And if you remember, that began in, in April. So we only saw three months of revenue, and that's why it's low, but we didn't have any expenditures. And then the, the remainder of it are the funds that we have assigned for the fiscal year 2020. Then revenues less expenditures, so that surplus that we just talked about on the last slide is added back into that amount, $130,000, leaving us an unrestricted fund balance of $10.7 million. Of that, we have a 30% reserve policy also set by council. And I know this looks weird, so let me explain, the, the 30% reserve policy is not 30% of our fund balance, however, it's 30% of our expenditures for the year, so if we go back to that last slide, you'll see that our expenditures were $19.6 million. We have to keep as part of our reserve policy 30% of that amount, and that's where we come up with the $5.8 million. That leaves us an estimated ending fund balance of 4.8. What does this mean and why is it important? That's basically what we're saying is our fund balance surplus, and so if we're looking at doing special projects, this is what we would be tapping into. If we're looking at doing any equipment purchases, infrastructure projects, things like that, generally what we want to use the money for are one-time expenditures and not ongoing costs, because again, this is like a savings account and not necessarily something that's, you know, that we're putting funds into on an annual basis, so we want to make sure that we don't use that for ongoing costs, but instead one-time expenditures. So that being said, something else that we want to take into consideration when we're reviewing the projects and we're overall reviewing the budget is what is the economic climate of the city? Not only the internal fiscal health of the city, but what are the external indicators that might tell us that our revenues might be in jeopardy? So that being said, obviously, we have the pandemic, it's still ongoing. We are uncertain how long it's going to continue, but with the mass vaccinations, growth is expected in 2021 fiscal year. UCLA forecast assumes that the economy will reach the previous peak by the end of this calendar year. However, that peak is still anticipated to be below pre-pandemic times. So what we were bringing in in 2019, even though we're gonna grow, maybe get close to that amount, we still are not expected to, to reach where we were prior to the pandemic. But we did, we are going to, we have not yet, we are going to receive funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. And we are expected to receive a little over $7 million. We'll talk a little bit about that more on how we could spend that on the next slide. Other internal fiscal health things that are positive are the housing market continues to increase here in the city of Lasbannis, we haven't seen a dip in those numbers at all. Development activity remains strong, and although sales tax revenue has decreased in some areas throughout the city, obvious ones like restaurants, it has increased in other places that were unexpected. So we're kind of seeing a status quo and not necessarily a dip. We saw a slight dip in 2020, but so far in 2021, we're, we're doing better than expected. So external indicators and things that may affect the city are retailers' health, how are our businesses doing? What type of businesses haven't been able to open because of the pandemic? Which ones are suffering because of the pandemic and how does that affect the city? Local business growth has slowed, obviously, as you know, a lot of businesses are closed and therefore we're not really seeing new businesses come in, we might have one here or there, but not necessarily to the extent that we may have pre-pandemic. And then, as we know, the fiscal distress of our residents, as well as our business owners, we have to take that into consideration. And then finally, what actually is happening is the economic stimulus checks are doing what was anticipated by the government when they did pay them. We are seeing those stimulus checks being spent in our area. So we take all this stuff into consideration, not only when we're planning the priorities as we're going to do tonight, but also when we're building the budget and if we should be conservative or not, because we're expecting maybe a dip in sales tax and/or a dip in property tax. That being said, American Rescue Plan Act, as I mentioned, we're anticipating bringing in a little over $7 million. There's not a lot of information on this yet, but what we do know from the plan itself is that there are four bullet points that we are allowed to spend our funding on, the first being revenue replacement. We do have to prove that the, the revenue was reduced due to COVID, so it can't just be a dip for any reason. And the base year is 2019, so if we want to take a look at 2020, where did our revenues drop, how much did they drop by, and what is in, because of COVID? So I did a quick estimate on that, and just looking at the general fund, overall, we lost about $530,000 in general fund revenues due to COVID, and that's in fiscal year 2020. And the estimates for fiscal year 2021 are coming in right now, close to a million dollars. We still have a few months in the year, so that, that could decrease a little, but mostly that is because of recreation programs, we don't get to have our recreation programs and that, that does generate a lot of money, there are some hits to interest and a little bit impact to sales tax that we're anticipating at this point, and it's a lot of impact in the 2019 year, so. One of the things we can do is replace our revenue, and that simply said is if we can prove that the deduction is because of COVID, we could take, for example, $500,000 and put it back in the general fund to do things that we would have done prior to the pandemic. A second thing that we could spend the money on are the premium pay to essential workers. What this is, is basically a benefit to our employees. If we choose to pay what we consider essential workers, the city not having shut down because of the pandemic, we can give them a one-time payment or an increase in their salary. There are limitations, however, it's a $13 per hour limitation above and beyond what they are entitled to originally, or a 25, no, not or, up to a $25,000 limit per employee. So that's something we can take a look at when we bring a plan back to council on how to spend the money. Additionally, we can invest in infrastructure, but only in three places, water, sewer, which we could probably do some great things with that money in those two enterprise funds. And additionally broadband, and what this would include would be getting into the internet business, which I don't think that the city wants to do, nor do I think that the $7 million would start that business, but additionally, what it could do is just work for the city itself to increase the speeds of our internet. And then finally, economic impact, and what this is, is how we can help our residents or your constituents, small businesses, there, we could offer assistance to small businesses, much like we did with the CARES Act. Households, again, much like we did with the CARES Act, where we paid, we did rental assistance, we did utility assistance for both PG&E, water, sewer, and garbage, and then industry as well as small businesses. So these are all things that we want to take a look at on how to, to spend our funding. The rescue plan does give the payment often to disbursements, the first payment for entitlement cities is 60 days after certification, but as you know, we're not a title, entitlement city, so our money would go first to the state and then the state would distribute it to the city. The state has 30 days after the receipt of it from the federal, from the feds to, to then give it to the city. And they can ask, ask for an extension, but at this point, it doesn't look like they would be doing that. And then the second payment would come one year after that first payment was received. The intention is to cover any costs of COVID-related incurred through December 31st of 2024. The one stipulation, the money cannot be used for pensions, so basically, we can't use it to help pay down our pensions. And the state, which we don't know at this point, may add additional stipulations to non-entitlement cities, so we haven't heard anything come out yet, but much like the CARES Act, they are allowed to do that. And staff will continue to research this, we have intended, we have attended several different webinars on the matter, trying to get as much information as we can. We would really appreciate a more specific way to spend the money and, and to know for sure when the state's actually gonna send that money to non-entitlement cities and if they might add any other additional stipulations, so it's something we're continuous, continuously researching. So tonight, something that we want to take into account are how do we want to select what our priorities are? And some of the things that we need to take into consideration are what's the estimated timeline for completion? Is this a quick project that we can get finished in a year, maybe that makes it a higher priority to council because it's something that the community wants, we can get done faster and that the funding's available there, so you do have to take a lot of different things into consideration. Anticipated resource allocation, in addition to funding and timeline, are, are the bodies available to do the project? Are there people to work on the job, did maybe we make it too heavy for one department? Say PD has 10 projects and they, but they don't have the resources available to manage those 10 projects in a year, so maybe we need fewer priorities for that department, just as an example. And then, of course, funding availability. As I mentioned before, when we are taking projects into consideration, we want to make sure that we're investing in critical infrastructure and projects that are suited for best use of the fund balance, and that we want to make sure that we assess the ongoing costs related with those projects and try to focus more on one-time one-time costs, one-time projects, one-time equipment needs. That don't necessarily have an ongoing cost or is something that can be easily absorbed by the fund. And then finally, economic and fiscal stability, we do want to maintain an economic and fiscal city. We have tried very hard not to, to issue debt within the city. We've tried very hard to secure the fund balance to make sure that not only did we have our 30% required by the city council, but we have a little bit more of a cushion. And the reason for this is, as you know, the city's two big revenue sources are property taxes and sales tax, and if we lose or we see a decrease in either one of those, then it is a significant financial impact to the city. And then finally, what is important to the community, how do these projects impact the community? That's another selection factor that we want to take into consideration when we are prioritizing these projects. So as I mentioned in the staff report, there are three categories of priorities. There's the high category, which means that the timeline fits, we can get that in there. Our goal for today is maybe to prioritize based on the budget and see, okay, what, as we're building the budget, if anything, can we fit in, in the budget? If it's not already there, what can we fit in the budget? So a high priority means that the, everything fits. We have the money to do it, or we're gonna try our best to find the money to do it. The timeline fits into the budget and we have the resources necessary to make the, the project a high priority. Medium is, it's important to accomplish, which of course, all of priorities are important to accomplish. But maybe it's not as important to us, or for some reason, it's a fa, a second phase to the project, so. A high priority for a project might be the studying the project or doing some type of initial, initial study for the project. And then medium might be, okay, now we've done the study and we come back and we need to actually start the construction of the project or the design or whatever Michael handed in with that project. And then low priorities are desirable goals, which means, yes, we'd like to have these things. We may need them eventually, but right now, it's not as high as a priority for staff and/or council, but we do need to address it in the future and we'd like to address it as resources permit. Now, when we're building out the budget, you might have something as a high priority that, let's just, for example, say, costs $300,000, but when I'm building the budget, I only have $50,000 to spend, so even though it's a low priority to council, it fits in the budget, so I go down the list and pull from the low priority and stick it in the budget only because of the affordability purposes. So you'll see things move around like that once we reach the budget workshop. But for now, we're just looking for council's priorities. So that being said, I'm gonna jump into the projects. As I mentioned before, I, I'm not gonna give a lot of detail on the projects, I'm just kinda give an overview of what the project is, if there's something that you have questions about or you want more detail on, please interrupt me and then we'll have the department head jump in and better explain the project to you. So this is the, the list I mentioned before, which was also included in your staff report as attachment A. These are the current prior, priorities and projects of the city council. They weren't, excuse me. They are high priority projects, and they are the new police station, which, as you know, we've already set aside funding for and are working on additional funding for the, the loan. Downtown strategic plan, the city council just adopted that a few months ago. The plan itself has been adopted, the projects within the plan have not been prioritized, so we'll be diving down a little bit into those projects tonight, so you can prioritize the projects as you see fit. Just recently, the council adopted a plan to build the splash pad at Pacheco Park, so that is a high priority of the council. The camera system, we start at phase one of the camera system at the beginning of the fiscal year, we just actually recently completed phase one of the camera project, so the question here to council tonight is, do we continue? The question here to council tonight is, do we continue on with additional phases of the camera camera system? General plan update, you just had a meeting last week about where we were with that. And then finally, code enforcement. We know that remains as a priority to council. And just overall conditions of the city and the code enforcement department itself. So those are the current priorities and projects. Moving on now, and these these projects are categorized high, medium and low, as I mentioned before. And. Um, that it's, the high, medium, low designation was developed by staff. And so, of course, this is what. Council could say, no, that's not our priority at all, or you have it as high, we want it as low. That's what we're gonna dive down into tonight, but just for now. I'm gonna touch a little bit on the project, so. The first project is the the ERP system, which is an enterprise resource planning tool. And basically, what this is, is. A new finance system. We have Springbrook right now, but Springbrook is very restricted. It doesn't. It doesn't reach out to other departments. Where what we're looking at reaches out to every department within the city. And as an example, and it all ties back into finance, which is extremely important, but as an example, code enforcement. So code enforcement, right now, they currently go out and they write the tickets, they write hand tickets, and then they bring the tickets back to. Their administrative clerk and the clerk sends out a notice letting you know that you owe this much. And then. That goes to, then she creates an invoice and that comes over to finance department. And finance department holds on to that, waits for it to be paid. If not, we send out a second notice. And if that second notice goes unpaid, we send them to collections, but. We're in different buildings and so we're walking across the street, taking this, and if we, if somebody calls about it, we need to pull up, we need to go back across the street and have them. Pull up the code enforcement citation for us. This would automate everything for us. It starts right in the truck, so whoever the code enforcement officer is would have uh some type of tablet, iPad, whatever we choose to get. Once we start the project and they would be able to do the ticket on the iPad, which would. Immediately populate into the finance system and it would create a ticket, print out the ticket for whoever the citation is being written to. Um, and so it kind of eliminates any room for error because it's automatically populating an accounts. Um, invoice, accounts receivable invoice, and we don't have to go walk back and forth and. Possibly lose paperwork. So it's just one of the things that makes it more efficient. Um, it does allow for us to accept other payments, not only in recreation, but maybe. Out at the um animal control center. Um, it also helps us. Uh, fast stream the shut offs for water, even though we're not doing them right now. Currently. We physically print out red tags, somebody from Public Works comes over and picks them out, they distribute them between the different guys. Out at the shop and. They go to each place and turn it off. And in order to find out if that person paid their water, they have to go all the way back to the office, get that information. And then go back out and turn the water back on. This, again, would give them some type of tablet and let them know, hey, that was paid. I know you just drove away from there, but please turn around and go back and turn it on. So it basically makes everything a little bit more efficient and it ties everything into. Um, our finance, um, our financing, so we could do everything a lot more automated. There's a lot more to it. I didn't even touch on business licenses or of all the other things it does. It does a lot of stuff for payroll. It um does things to help actually with the city council meetings. So it covers the city. Everything that we could possibly think of, it automates it and puts it into one system. Um. The cost is a little bit pricey for the initial fee. It's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's. That's taking into consideration the tablets and the setup and all of this. We do have money. This doesn't affect the general fund. Uh, there are impact fees available to pay for the initial cost of this. What does affect the general fund is the ongoing cost, which is about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually. That gets split between the general fund and the three enterprise funds. So that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Only twenty-five thousand or twenty-five percent of that is going to the general fund. That being said, for the software that we currently have. We're currently paying about eighty thousand dollars a year annually for what we have now, so it's not that um much of an impact. It's not that much of an increase, so. I said I wasn't gonna talk about it a lot, but that one was mine, so, sorry. Moving on, as part of the downtown strategic plan, um you'll see a couple of projects broken out here. Starting with the downtown gateway signage. This is the arc that is supposed to welcome people to the main street, which obviously is at the end of. Main and Pacheco. Um, the estimated cost for this sign is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And at this time, we don't know what the annual maintenance cost would be. Downtown infrastructures, um as I said, you'll see um on the next slide is or on the median priorities. That this project is broken down into different phases and that's that's done because what we think we could actually get done. In a fiscal year. So it's broken down by studies that need to be completed um and what we think we can get done. So. The downtown infrastructure, design underground and design streetscape are anticipated, um. The the underground is a cost of about thirty-six thousand dollars and the streetscape is a cost of about eighty-five thousand dollars. And again, this is just for design, so um streetscape can be something like the um. Sidewalks or the the paving system, whether you redo the entire sidewalk or if you complete the paver project that's on the sidewalk, it could also go. With other things to uh beautify the streetscape of the downtown area. Um, the camera surveillance project is what I mentioned a little bit before. That is, we just finished um. Phase one of that system. If you'd like to continue on with other phases of that system, it's about a hundred thousand dollars annually. Um, depending on how far you want to take the project. So I know the chief would probably be happy to blanket the entire city. And again, that's up to the city council. This is a general fund expense. It costs us about one thousand dollars per location. Um, in annual operating cost. And then animal truck um replacement, that's about a seventy-five thousand dollar um. Cost, but animal control is in desperate need of an upgrade. Continuing with high major city goals, I RIMS. Um, basically, I RIMS is an additional component. To the records management system that we have. So we have a system over in PD called RIMS. Um, what this does is allow. This is a platform to allow for the RIMS to be fully integrated onto um. A mobile device, so an iPad or any other type of tablet. And that is a cost of approximately sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, and the reason why it's been kind of held back. But needs to be done is that there is an ongoing cost of about thirty-five thousand dollars annually for that. That is a general fund expense. It can be paid using Measure H money as well, but as you know, um Measure H has a ten-year limitation. Police vehicle replacements. So right now, we replace police vehicles when we can, which is not always good for the police department. Um, we do have a lot of cars that have high mileage, um maybe sometimes they don't start up. Uh, they're just not as reliable as they need to be. I've been in the ones that the seats are torn. Um, because of the guy's utility belts and things like that. So what we're trying to do is to get on a schedule where. We can replace three or four cars annually, um. And that is, I'm sorry, that's a cost of approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for four vehicles. Fire station two addition is to expand um the crew quarters to accommodate a third firefighter. Um. We are trying to be able to pay that out of Measure P, but I don't think it was included in the expenditure plan. The cost is anticipated to be a little over two hundred thousand dollars. And so that's another thing we're looking at, station security also for fire station one and two. Um, that's to finish the installation of. The bullet resistant window and the storefront to the lobby area. Um, and then this will complete the station security project that we started. Um, last fiscal year. SCBA's replacement, much like a vehicle replacement, we need to make sure that this is on a regular schedule. Um, I believe that the requirement is every fifteen years that they need to be replaced, but we need to replace them regularly before. They get old and there's one assigned to each firefighter, so if we get new firefighters, they all, they will need a new one as well. So moving on to medium. Um, priority. Again, downtown infrastructure, this is continued from phasing out those projects. This year two would include. Um, construction of the underground that we asked for design the year before, designing construction of streetlights and construction of streetscape. The costs associated with those projects are um one point five million for the construction of the underground. One point three million for the construction and design of the street lighting. And then about eighty-five thousand, oh no, I'm sorry, the construction of the streetscape is unknown, so. It obviously depends on what we decide to do with it and that could get extremely pricey, um especially if we're talking about. Completely replacing sidewalks. Downtown parking, uh this is, it, this is if we're beautifying the downtown, do we need additional parking? Uh, there are things that need to be done, a study, possible rehabilitation of parking lots and possible new construction. Uh, those projects include seventy-five thousand, uh, I'm sorry, let me just give you the totals, which is about four hundred and thirty thousand. Initial cost for the study and construction and then the ongoing costs are unknown because. Of course, we don't know how many parking lots we would have, would they be new, would they just be upgrades? Animal shelter addition and upgrades, something that we've talked about.
Getting back to the downtown parking, is that for our existing parking? Lot that we have in downtown at four hundred and thirty K or you just estimating some other lands somewhere else?
No, it's it's a breakdown of this uh a study. Which a study we're estimating would cost approximately seventy-five thousand to see what type of parking that we needed. And if the the parking that we have already or the lots that we might be considering are feasible. Um, rehabilitation of what we have is estimated at a hundred and seventy-five thousand and new construction is estimated at a hundred and eighty thousand.
And uh this new construction, where is this supposed to be?
I think it's just an estimate and there's no decided location.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Animal shelter addition and upgrade, we've talked about this in the past. We are aware that we either need to bring our animal, our existing animal shelter. Um, update it completely, make it a little bit uh more efficient and or. Add additions to it. A code enforcement vehicle, we'd like to add one of those to the fleet, license plate reader program. Uh, we bought one this current fiscal year, but we'd like to buy another one or two of those. Fire station addition, fire station number one addition. So what this is, is to expand. Or remodel the current fire station one office space, add training rooms, EOC and crew quarters. And then fire rescue equipments replacement. These are things like hoses and rescue equipment, things that um. Are either outdated or they have new technology. This is something that we also need to take into consideration and if funding is available. Um, replace on an annual basis.
Sonia, before you move to the next uh item, the first bullet downtown infrastructure, you have. Underground construction at one point five million, um. Design lighting at uh one point three and the streetscape is um unknown at this time. Do you have anything more specific on the first two um? Items of underground construction, exactly what are we looking at undergrounding and wha- what design? Uh, I I'm not sure exactly. It it's it's a general category and I I guess I'm asking, do you have more specific information about? What those two categories are?
Stacy, do you mind jumping in there?
Sure. So the undergrounding would be to underground the overhead utilities. So we have some telephone and electrical lines. Um, some of it was undergrounded with the redevelopment agency. But there are still gaps in downtown where there was no undergrounding that we need to expand upon. Um, and then while we have that um. Open trench, uh we might as well do a joint open trench and um. Make sure that we have adequate water on both sides of the street. Um, some sides of the street have water and some sides do not. We also need to make sure um. That there is adequate wastewater, so if there is um a sewer lateral that could help possibly facilitate for a restaurant, for instance. Or um, you know, grease trap intercept or that type of infrastructure, we we would need to design that. Um, so that was under the high priority. We would design and um. Basically describe what infrastructure needs to be undergrounded and then in medium, which. Sonia is categorizing that as medium because that's in future fiscal years we'll be constructing, so that underground would include. Um, and this isn't in your downtown strategic plan, um it defines the infrastructure. As being um water, sewer, storm, um but it also categorizes um fiber optic. As infrastructure, um and then the electrical and telephone poles as well as, um so we're gonna be looking at all of that as. You know, it's the grand picture of downtown and um we might as well do it and. We might as well plan for it instead of continuing to open the street um as we need to make changes to infrastructure.
So what what area are you looking at from street to street, north, south, east, west? What what area are we looking at covering for the underground construction?
So essentially, we're looking at from K to H and from up to fifth, up to seventh. So it's basically the boundary of the P B, which is the core business district.
Okay, so if if when that contract comes up again uh to be renewed and. Downtown association decides to expand. Um, their boundaries. Has that been taken into consideration?
Into this downtown infrastructure, at that point, we would be upgrading our capital improvement program as, and that would be built. As well, as we continue to expand those boundaries, that would be built into future capital improvement programs.
Alright, thank you.
The money for this is general fund money or P B money?
So Sonia can talk about that, but um it is the the infrastructure, the city infrastructure side of it, as as. I've uh put together for Sonia is out of the general fund. Um, the P B, if they have. Um, I know that they would be willing to collaborate with us and partner, however. Um, they do not have, even over the life of P B over five years, they would not have. The amount of money that it would take to construct this infrastructure. So um. What I see their role would be more of the beautification side of that streetscape. So the the planting of the landscaping, the maintenance, the beautification side, I think we have a a great opportunity to partner with them. Um, to really paint the whole picture of that beautification.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so it it would mostly be general fund. There may be an opportunity, depending on what we're changing as far as the underground goes, for it to be. To come out of enterprise funds. If it has something to do with the water, we might be able to use water funds. Um, we might even be able to use other monies, um gas tax monies or street, street monies, which. As you know, street is general fund, but we do have um other. Other um funding sources that pay into i- into that fund, so. It's all a matter of what actually needs to be done and I think that's where the study comes in and then we can see. Um, where the funding is most feasible.
Okay, thank you, because we love to preserve our general fund.
We we definitely do. We've been trying for at least as long as I've worked there.
One last question there, um. Are there any grant programs out there that we need to be having a a grant writer go after to help us with these things?
Well, we definitely look at grant programs regardless of what it is. As you know, we're working on some with the um parks. Uh, Stacy does some every once in a while with CDBG. If we require a grant wr- writer to assist us, then we will usually pull one in. At that time, um we've used them again most recently for uh the park plan. And so we are constantly looking up grants for all aspects of assistance and financing.
Yeah, sometimes the grants that are available are not necessarily just named. Uh, according to what you're going after, they could be under some other category. Um, where you can get money to help with those items, so I I just.
Yeah, I have a lot, I have a lot of different um websites that are available to me. That I go and look at, whether it's a federally funded, state-funded grant program and sometimes they're privately funded programs. And so. I'm constantly reviewing those to see, you know, is this something that can help us with projects? Um, is there a matching requirement? Is this something that we can afford? Um is there a matching requirement, is this something that we can afford? Et cetera, et cetera, I think that the other department heads do it probably more specific to projects that they have where I'm kind of looking generally overall.
Cause I I know on the police vehicles that we're talking about, I think um sidewalk King Quality Airport has monies out there that they distribute to replace police vehicles, so I I'm I'm hoping and I'm sure that we investigated that and if not, that there's another opportunity.
Definitely.
For getting money.
Definitely. Okay, so moving on to the low and desirable goals, they are obviously still desirable, they're just less desirable, or for instance, the very first one. Maybe it's desirable and we have the money to do it in this instance, but at things have changed, so we don't necessarily need it right off and the the example is admin fleet replacement and what I'm specifically talking about is the Ford Expedition that's sitting in the parking lot. Um we were set to replace that at the beginning, uh actually around March of last fiscal year when the pandemic hit, we were already through the bid process, we had chosen a bid and we actually canceled it because we didn't know financially what to expect from the pandemic and we thought the money was better off saved, it was forty-five thousand dollars. But again, we were unsure of how hard hit we were going to be, so we froze that. Um we put it on the back burner, it remains on the back burner because obviously we're not traveling anywhere at this time. So once meetings pick back up, we will, you know, look to put that back into the budget, but at this time it's not necessary because we're not using it. Um digital sign replacement, that's the sign that you see coming into town. Um over on I Street by the airport and again, that the sign is working. Um but we just are aware that in the future it is going to need to be replaced. Um it is very beneficial to the city and we do actually generate revenue off of that sign. Um again, it's not a high priority to us, but it's something that we need to have in the back of our mind. A couple other things that fall under that same category are public safety radio upgrade, police radio voter replacement and class A uniform headgear, or these are hats for the police department. Um fire department is has replacing their aerial ladder truck on the back burner, this is very costly to the city and the funding source would be the general fund. It is over a million dollars if I remember that correctly, let me check Mason's notes so I don't misspeak. Aerial ladder truck, oh, one point five million, I came in short. Um and then Public Works has an aerial boom truck and a stump grinder, these are also uh general fund projects. Or general fund equipment, the aerial boom truck is two hundred thousand dollars and the stump grinder is thirty-five thousand. They were both included, well requested in the budget last year and they were pulled because again these are general fund items and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a large hit to the general fund. So attachment B or exhibit B in your staff report lists out all of the goals that I just mentioned, or all of the priorities that I just mentioned. They're in a little bit different order, they are in order by department. The reason for that is, as I mentioned, um when we talked a little bit about the resources available, we don't want to pile on too many in one department, so they're they're by department, so you could see who it hits. Um what's our, what the goal is tonight is to for council to give staff direction on the priorities that I have mentioned and any priorities that I did not mention, if staff has additions that they'd like to discuss. Projects that they don't feel are no longer relevant, so you might want to remove it from the list. And once we have the list created with any additions or deletions, we want to prioritize or reprioritize the list, meaning we want to make sure that everything's in a certain category. High, medium, or low. In the staff report, um the the following process was mentioned for consideration for adding, deleting, or reprioritizing items. And that was that a council member would recommend that an item be considered high, medium, or low priority. If the majority of the council supports the ranking, the item will be moved to the recommended priority. Um the council may decide a project's priority based on milestones for the year, project completion. Staff can compress, can can provide input, um basically input for realistic list um creation, so are the resources available? Um and what is the best priority distribution? And I think we we fill it, we kind of did that already. And then um just one final thought, with all with all projects, while all projects are important. Um projects may or not be accomplished by the end of the year. Um of course, there's several things that might come up that affect uh the completion of a project. And that because the project is a high priority for council, making it a high priority for staff, it does not necessarily mean that it can be included included in the budget, again, this is the first step to the budget process. And so we're trying our best to put a list together to see what's important to you and as we build out the budget, we can determine whether or not it's feasible to include it in the budget. So with that being said, um I think this is the point in time where council has their discussion on anything they might want to add, delete, or reprioritize.
Thank you, Sonia, um I'm there, I don't know if anyone else is feeling just a little bit overwhelmed. Um but I am and um I I wouldn't think if we could uh maybe schedule one more of these because uh and if we could get this beautiful PowerPoint with the uh with the amounts, just everything costs. And then let council have a little time to digest it and review it. And then we can compare, each council member can compare our own ideas to the what staff has given us and look at the numbers. Give us a little more time, because I wouldn't expect us all to be able to get this done tonight, because this is huge. And rightly so, uh and I'm very pleased, this is outstanding work and I'm very pleased with this, how comprehensive this presentation is. Uh what I do know though is I I do know that uh as an as a council member and as mayor that I like, uh this takes, I think this is gonna take a little time to digest. Uh but I will go through, I'll go through and see uh if there's any particular items that each council member would like to really, you know, put up there at the top of the list or or maybe not want to see on the list right now. But also I also plan, I would ask council to think about having one another meeting here so that we can digest all of this and re and rework it, so I'll go through the council. Uh Mr. Jones?
Yes, Mayor. Alright, um I do like the police station, the police facility is still up there at the top, uh downtown strategic plan. Um we gotta get those sidewalks done. Um and that's gonna take a little bit of creativity on the design, we may have to get an architect in to figure that out for us, to figure out what's gonna be uh the best design and flow. Um when it comes to the Pacheco Park and Splash Pad, I know that's one's pending a grant application that we're submitting in, I believe. Um that's probably not the highest on my priority. Uh just because, you know, when we were talking about the Splash Pad locations, we had Bill Ransford Park, we had the St. Francis area and we had the Chaco Park, for some reason it just wasn't hitting right that that was the best location was to Chaco Park. Um yeah, for some reason our grant doesn't go through for that location there. And we bring this up again in another year or so, I'd like to consider the west side of Henry Miller Plaza. Um and the reason for that is we do need additional parking out there, so it'd be nice to take some of that R D A uh property uh when when we actually able to get our hands on it and develop an additional park lot, big splash pad. And it'd be nice to have bathrooms there right now. When we use the community uh or the Henry Miller Plaza. We have to open the bathrooms across the street over there at the um uh the Miller and Lux Building, so it'd be nice to have bathrooms a little closer out there, so I think we'd probably get a little bit more use of some of the infrastructure going in around uh a splash pad over there on the west side of Henry Miller Plaza as a alternative location. Um I would like to see that camera system go through a little faster, we've been talking about that for about two years now. I would like to see that uh definitely start the process of getting that in this year along with the license plate readers, so as far as high priorities, that one's definitely a high priority for me. And then the other one is the um what is it, the I R M S, is that the software that where all the departments will be able to talk to each other real easy?
No, that's the E R P system.
The E R P, okay, that one there, in my opinion, that should be near the top of the list as well, getting that in there, just just to speed up the efficiency with our employees. Right now, just the way that we're doing things, it's just uh it it's so frustrating and slow. So I think we need to move that one up as well, make sure that one gets in there as soon as possible. So everything else looks great, the way that you guys have placed it, that's all for me.
Mayor, do you mind if I make some comments to?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So just as a F Y I, because I didn't go into a lot of detail on these projects and Mr. Jones just mentioned the splash pad, so the the splash pad construction would be paid out of park development fee, so the funding for the splash pad construction is there. Um what he's talking about with the grant would be the further improvements to to the park. Um and then the ongoing costs for that, which I have now initially, the amount I was given is only twelve thousand dollars. That is what would affect the general fund, because we can't use developer fees to pay the the ongoing maintenance costs, but that would be paid out of there. As far as it going over on the rail trail, which I believe is what you were saying, Mr. Jones, that's a little bit um of a hiccup. And the reason I say that is because it was cleaned to a certain extent. And the extent was not to allow for that park, I believe, so that might cause a lot of additional funding if we had to further clean that property. Um it is categorized for certain things and I don't know that a splash pad would qual qualify. But I just wanted to clarify a few of those points on your um comments. That's all, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh Mr. Lambert?
Yeah, thank you, um so my, I'm I'm kind of with him on the priority, on the higher priority priority list, especially with the uh E R P. I may be possibly putting that up towards the top, uh just for uh I mean, we're already paying annually eighty-eight thousand annually and we're still kind of slow. Uh that would be my, the police station facility, of course. Um the downtown, uh what we can get, pretty much everything here, uh I just have a couple other questions I wanted to ask about. Um I'm all for, and this is down on the police side, uh the vehicle replacement, uh three to four annually. Um I kind of, I tried to write down all these numbers and you were going, kind of like with the mayor, I'd like to see all the numbers.
Sure.
The uh camera surveillance project. Um the animal control truck replacement, are we repairing the truck? You know, monthly or I'm not sure, you know, what 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 are we doing to the animal control truck? Um and of course, the I I I R I M S. Uh it it, um you know, I'd like to see some of the numbers where we're uh especially with the animal control or animal shelter upgrade, do we look at animal shelter upgrade? Maybe moving up into the higher priority before the animal control uh replacement.
So.
Those are just. I know the animal shelter needs to be upgraded. Um the truck replacement.
Uh I can jump in on that, one council member. The current animal control truck is a two thousand and five, it's about fifteen years old. And um has over a hundred and sixteen thousand miles on it. It's our only truck, we don't have a backup truck to that, so when that goes down, we're in we're in pretty rough rough shape, we're trying to find a pickup truck and throw a um portable kennel in the back of of that. Um with the age of the truck, the box is rusted out in several places. It's not air conditioned or anything like that, so he has to make frequent trips back to the shelter. Um we can certainly milk that one along for another year. Um it's just for us, it amounted to the higher priority priority list. Due to the age of the truck, the box condition and the um high mileage, we've had to go in and do some repairs on the interior, the seats ripping apart. The the ceiling was come coming down, so we're sort of piecing that thing together as best we can. We brought this project forward about three years ago, we keep kicking the can down the road um on the animal control truck uh truck, so um you know.
If we did go at the, if we did go with the new one, then we could actually utilize this one as a backup or uh secondary use uh truck in the future, if if needed.
Exactly.
I I I I agree with that. Uh that's, I I uh that's all I have, uh Mayor, just some of those, I'd like to see the numbers though later down the road, we may be able to shuffle some more around.
Yeah, and I and I actually do have a a department detailed list with with the numbers and and I apologize and and I didn't share it with Gary and I should have, but previous administration suggested that I not include it. So I did not, and I didn't share it with Gary to get his um perspective on the situation and I and I should have, so I do apologize for that, but but Mr. Lambert, just to give you an idea of what we have for the animal shelter and and what puts it as a lower priority is that it's, the estimated cost is two million dollars and that is a hit to the general fund. And and.
Is that being as a new location or just re?
No, this is renovating, so the the breakdown would be a parking lot upgrade for two hundred and twenty thousand. Wheelchair ramp upgrade for thirty thousand and shelter improvements estimated at one point seven five.
Is this increasing capacity also?
Yeah, I can talk to that one, Sonia.
Okay, thank you.
Council member, that's a good, good question, it's it's the construction of a new, give or take thirteen hundred square foot facility to replace the existing mobile that's out there. Uh we we can go certainly much lower with another mobile to replace the existing one that we've got, that would that would suffice for at the time being. This exercise, we went out and got a bid using uh Panera, the group, the project management group that's working with us on the new police department. Right sized it based on our previous um needs assessment work that we did with Indigo. But we scaled it down a lot just to bare minimum, um longer term structure, sound construction process, it's about one point seven five million dollars to get that there. But like I said, we can do a another mobile, swap out the existing for another one and save a lot of that dollar, but this about two million dollar quote includes upgrades to the existing shelter, cat rooms, dog rooms, a medical room, office space, uh laundry room, some of the things that are probably long overdue for our animal shelters, this new facility at that estimate of about one point five, seven five to two million if you do go to do the parking lot, but we can most certainly go much less expensive. It won't increase the size of our uh capacity, but definitely improve the situation.
And we're definitely, I I I don't worry, thank you, Archie.
Thank you very much. On the animal shelter, uh is there is the location something that we might look to look at changing, I mean, we have maybe if some of this D L A land comes in? Uh or you know, right now it's out there in that airport area and who knows what could happen with the airport, possibly in the future, I'm thinking if we were to put two million dollars into something and then have to then have to tear it all out or you know, wouldn't make a lot of sense, uh what do you think?
So we did, as part of our needs assessment process with Indigo, we did go through the process of site selection. We looked at three different parcels altogether, one of them was on the rail trail, actually, right next to our planned improvement for the new police facility. I thought that has a fantastic uh position for our shelter to be in, but you get into the area of noise and um pollution, uh smells, odors, all of those different things that come from an operation of an existing animal shelter. And uh we chose not to do that in that position there uh at the the new new police department location. We looked at another site that of that is property owned by the city out of the wastewater treatment plant. That we could do it out there, but it's in the county, it takes a while to get there and when you're you know, you're trying to be efficient in your movements and your day to day operations, it's a long trek to get out to the to the animal shelter. Beyond those locations, we did not look at any other spots in town uh just because of the cost factor. And we kind of started to go away from uh the animal shelter at that point, just because of the the financial limitations that we encountered in trying to do both the new P D and animal shelter.
Oh yeah, now we've got, we've got the dog park going in, was there any room out there? Uh over out in that park, you know, would there be any room out there, that might be an interesting connection. And not too far.
Sorry, yeah, no, I think the uh the old bottle dump out there, I'm not sure what the closure status is of that that piece of property just yet, but it is something um that we looked at, in fact, I wanted to move the dog park out by the animal shelter, because I think they're they're too great, it's a great synergy that you create between those two. It's a great synergy that you create between those two, um, being co-located. So, the only problem that you have is that when we're building a new animal shelter facility, your costs just keep going up and up. I was trying to keep the cost down with uh the addition of what we were doing at the current location. And right now, if we sell the airport someday, or we tend to move, or we decide to move the animal shelter, that could be a factor. How much money we invest in now?
Right, all the moving parts. Thank you so much.
There, council member.
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Jones?
I have a quick question, okay.
Sure.
Um, regarding the animal shelter, that's a lot of money to sink into an area. And once we plan on keeping that or airport there. So, for the longest time, I thought we were working on relocating that airport. So it's just a lot of money to sink into that animal shelter there. It's long overdue, it's needed, but uh. Is that small money in the big picture here? I mean, two million dollars, I mean, that's, that's a big. That's a big chunk there, so, and then also, planning on hanging on to that airport there, that airport's overdue for an overlay. There, so, um, it's either we're gonna have to keep that airport where it's at, put some serious money into it. Or we're gonna have to have a hard conversation about moving it and moving that shelter, so. Um, anyway, it's just something to think about. I don't know, maybe staff's already started thinking about that overlay on that runway there.
So the the feds do provide funding for the overlay on the runway there? The only reason it hasn't been completed is because of. Prior councils and um making the decision on whether it was gonna be moved or not. And so we, it just keeps on getting postponed, it's in the budget on an annual basis, however, it continues to get postponed because um of the uncertainty of what we are going to do.
So where's our talk about relocating uh the airport, is that gone quiet or is that still in the works?
My understanding is it's dropped off of the priority list, I didn't include it on your prior priority list, mu- but um. I mean, I guess it, that's, I guess falls under the category of something that you could add on to the priorities.
Council member, we can look at it and bring it back to you, uh, at our next meeting on this topic. I see Fred is on his camera, Fred, did you have some input on there? I know it's a big discussion.
Thank you. I I just wanted to mention that, yes, we are looking at some maintenance. Obviously, we don't want to put a lot of money into the runway, it's for safety purposes and that's something that. We are asking for a budget for next fiscal year to study that. And 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 see what we can do to make sure that the levels of safety of the runway are maintained. Without spending too much money at this point on the airport. As we also look at the po- possibility of relocating the uh, the airport. So safety and overall maintenance, regular maintenance of the runway is what we are looking at.
Yeah, it seems like whatever we do, if we do try to replace the airport, it's probably at least ten years out. I mean, the way that uh things are going with some of our other priorities. Um, so I guess whatever maintenance we do, we just plan it for a ten year cycle or something like that lifespan. And that's it, so I think we are gonna probably have to get some of that fed money to uh do an overlay, just so it lasts us for at least ten years. Because I don't see a new airport coming in anytime before that. I mean, we don't even have ground designated, let alone monies for it. So, but we have to do something.
I know there was quite a conversation between us and the FAA in regards to movement of the airport. Couple of years back with the public works director and the city manager, we'll, I have to dig that up for you and see if we can provide you an update at a upcoming council meeting. It's a very good question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Porten Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I'm gonna stick my foot in my mouth just a bit here. Um, and I, first of all, I agree with the mayor that um. We need to have more information on this with the the amounts, uh, in regards to each priority cate- category. And the foot in mouth that I wanna say is that, you know, today's a new day, we have a new city manager. And uh, what, what was said to staff in the past no longer applies. Um, I myself expect to have as much information to make a logical decision, uh, based on what's in front of us. So, I I just wanted to say that upfront, that um, you know, we're, we're moving forward. For something good in our city and and that's a part of it. Um, and you know, just, and and Mr. Mayor, uh, jump in if if you'd like to. From my memory, um, on that airport situation, uh, there were some promises made about land. That we may have been able to acquire and move a hospital, but the FAA came in, oh, so let's see.
Batteries.
Yep. Okay, the FAA came in and told us that we would have to have the land and move the airport. And basically have it up running in order not to lose all the monies that they've given us. Uh, to do overlays and keep that airport going, otherwise we'd have to pay all that back. Uh, we spent a lot of money on studies, um, uh, various wind studies. Uh, throughout our, our city and county area within the Los Manos area. But nothing has, you know, we made statements about what we wanted to see happen. But I think where the council probably dropped the ball is that we didn't have anything definitive. As far as how we're gonna start uh prioritizing money to move it into moving that airport. So, that's where everything just kinda got lost, uh, you know, it just kinda got washed away with the tide. And now we have a new day, we can start working strategically towards moving that airport. Because that is very valuable land within the city of Los Manos. And I agree, I I would hate to see a lot of money spent on an, on a shelter there. When at some point, whether it's ten years down the line or fifteen, that we have to move that shelter. Because now, you know, we're in the position of uh having land for the airport. And, you know, getting some monies to to build a new airport. So, um, that's something that we have to prioritize and make sure that we're up and running on. Um, it just off the surface, uh, for some of my priorities, the ERP system. Um, is is I, I think it's very important that all of our, our departments are able to communicate. And to make things simplified as far as, um, when I look at code enforcement for our staff to begin, to be able to get out there. And get the job done more efficiently, uh, so that um they're able to move on. And, you know, just not spend a lot of time doing everything the old fashioned way of handwriting out tickets, coming back in. Going over to administration and back and forth. Um. Code enforcement, uh, I could appreciate getting a new vehicle for uh animal control. Um, again, I stated there, there are grants out there and, you know, we just had a meeting with the. Uh, San Joaquin Air Quality Control, and there was discussion about replacing police vehicles. I would assume that falls under police vehicle. Uh, so there may be some monies there that we're able to garner to help replace that um animal control vehicle. Code enforcement to me is a big priority in our city. And I'm not sure logistically, um, Gary, how. Uh, you and your department, under the police department, can handle this. But we've got a, a really high insurgency of um graffiti in our community. Um, I get a lot of reports from uh people in my district about it, concerns about it. Um, and I don't know if it's one tagger or a bunch of taggers, but it just keeps popping up. And uh, but it doesn't go away. And and perhaps, you know, on the council end, maybe we need to do something. Um, in regards to an ordinance about how quickly a, a business needs to get their property cleaned up. And how it's cleaned up, but it's cleaned up with the same color kind of paint that's on the wall and not just anything that they can find. But for me right now, that, that's a, a really big priority is code enforcement. The graffiti, uh, we have landscape issues where pe- uh businesses, uh, under their contract. When they, when they had their property approved, um, it it's required that they keep up their landscape. And if any, um, landscape died, they were required to replace it, but they don't seem to be doing that. Um, so, everything else, I I'd like to wait to try to prioritize, once we get the numbers on it. But for me, that's the big issue within our city is code enforcement. Um, and the day to day operation, you know, I I see in there, uh, as part of the statement of this. Um, uh, agenda that we have, that that's up to uh administration to do that. But when, when we see something happening, we have to be able to address it. And and of course, obviously, it does affect the day to day operation, but. I think, at least for me, my goal is to make sure that we could step up. And have this kind of thing disappear more quickly than what it is. So I, I'm going to uh basically reserve everything else. Uh, I would like to see this come back pretty quickly to council. Because I know other departments are going to have their priority list that uh they want to um express. And and certainly, I I think council, you were looking to have council address this, uh, before the staff did. Um, one thing I do, I would like to add as, as a priority for, for the council. Is that at some point, once we get to a different color category, I'm almost sure that we'll end up going back into chamber. And um, last year it was in our budget to have uh some equipment replaced, replaced for the council. And this year, I think, uh, we need to have some um precautionary. Uh, uh, situation uh set up for us at the dais where we, we will be able to socially distance safely. So, um, that, that's a category I think we need to build in to the budget, uh, for the chambers. Uh, to protect the council and the people who come in. Um, I I don't know how the seating category is gonna happen. We had some uh priority set up, uh, just at the beginning of COVID before we went, uh, went, left the chamber. But uh, once we could go back in, I think it's important that we set up uh that dais. So that everybody up there is protected. So I'll, I'll just reserve the rest, um, for when, when the numbers come back and then I'll, I'll make my statements then. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. On that uh safety and the, uh, at the dais, uh, plexiglass between each council member. Uh, would probably be a not, not terribly expensive, but very effective way of, of dealing with that. Then we wouldn't have to spread each other, wouldn't have to spread out all over the, all over the chamber, we can still stay at the dais.
Yeah, I'm seeing other councils online that have adopted uh situations like that, where they have plexi between each council member. And some that have it in front of the, the council, out to the audience as well, so. Um, but it's something we still need to investigate.
Yeah, so that is something actually that uh staff has been directed to research. And so it is something that we're currently looking at when we do anticipate bringing council back in. So, we've been researching that already. I don't have any costs associated with that for you at this time.
And I would assume that would be for staff as well, um, in, in the areas that they sit at, not just the council.
Um, that's correct, and we obviously would bring back council, and if we had to limit staff, it would probably rotate depending on. Who needed to be at that meeting, and then some of them might still have to, to, to attend remotely, depending on um how we can fit people best in here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I like the idea of uh investing in the consolidated electronic uh systems. Uh, to increase efficiency. The only question I have is as to the life cycle of these uh portable electronic devices. Uh, and then the, the software. Sometimes they continuously upgrade the software in order to, as part of a business. Want to continuously have sales. Uh, so hopefully that doesn't, that doesn't increase and continue to increase, and then we have products that we have to continue buy. That's my only question on that. Uh, I don't need an answer right now.
Oh, I could, I could actually give you one. So the, the, the system that we're currently looking at, that we're doing our research on. Has um, the updates are built into the maintenance prod- uh, package. So as they update their, their systems, we would be updated. So if it's annually, we would be updated annually. Current system that we, the current system that we have, if we wanna be updated, we have to completely replace the system, which the last time we did that was in. Two thousand and fourteen. Now, we get minor updates to keep the thing going, but if we want the newest, latest and greatest. It's completely repurchasing the system, which is, you know, at a cost of this five hundred to seven hundred thousand. The tablets are a little bit different, and yes, as those, you know, get outdated, then we would have to do that. But we would add a replacement cost in, we'd probably, you know, get them on a rotating schedule, so we're not in a situation where we're replacing them all at one time.
Okay. Now, as far as the police vehicles, uh, I know the uh, mentioned some about torn seats, is that? Because the vehicle is at that life cycle end, or is that just uh something that's gonna happen regardless if the vehicle's new or not, you knew? Um, and how many vehicles do we have in the fleet right now?
So we currently, the entire fleet, I believe, is fifty-one vehicles, the patrol vehicles are eighteen. Um, I'm gonna ask Chief Haddon to um jump in here, because he has a lot more information than I do.
Council member, as far as the um rip seats and things like that, the officers are in and out of the car, uh, hundreds of times. You know, sometimes, uh, weekly, so there's going to be some wear and tear. Where we're seeing it more prevalent are on some of those higher mileage vehicles. Like, uh, for example, Car Ten is a two thousand and sixteen Ford utility. So it's not one of our oldest by any stretch, but it has a hundred and twenty-three thousand miles, almost a hundred and twenty-four thousand miles. So that the, the seat starts to get pretty worn on the driver's side. Um, we do our best because of, to avoid and mitigate back injuries and things like that to keep those up. Um, but in if, in this case, a vehicle with that high a mileage, um, it's, you know, we start to weigh the cost of. Replacing the entire vehicle versus changing engines, interiors, parts, stuff like that, uh, because it can get quite costly. Um, I can answer any other questions, but, you know.
No, that, those, those, thank you very much, sir. As far as the brised, I, I agree with it. I do have some of the same concerns with the airport and the uh, the animal shelter. I mean, there we have somewhat of a problem, because if. We're not spending the money and we have animals that uh maybe could benefit from some of those expenditures, maybe. That might hasten, maybe partial improvements to the uh shelter, maybe we can review that again, things that we can. Do to, again, uh, provide for the uh welfare of those animals while they're there. Uh, and maybe, I know, uh, offset some or maybe not invest that whole. Amount that we talked about, but just look at it, uh, uh, smaller improvements as we decide what we're gonna do with the airport. And because I think that's gonna be deciding as to what we do with the animal shelter as well, so. As far as the rest of it, no, thank you very much, I appreciate the uh, the report, uh, it was detailed, uh. But yeah, I, I'd like some more time to, to look at it some more, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chief Haddon, uh, the uh. What is the, what is the average mileage life of, of an interceptor?
Typically, they say you should replace it around a hundred thousand miles. That's when you're, because of the, the police vehicles are driven so hard and they're running twenty-four hours a day. In many cases, most of these vehicles are assigned to either two to three officers. Um, so that, you know, we can keep them going on the, on the road and we don't have to, you know, we don't have to have the expense of purchasing everybody a car. Um, but our, the vehicles that we're looking at replacing are in the hundred and twenty-three, hundred and twelve, hundred and ten thousand. Uh, mileage range. We do have one vehicle, uh, that we did take offline, it's sitting at City Yard. We got an estimate to replace an engine on that, that's a two thousand and fourteen Teplice, it has a hundred and ten thousand mile- miles. But the projected cost was fifteen thousand dollars to replace the engine, if we sent that out to the dealer to be replaced. And if we did it in-house, it was in the eight to ten thousand dollar range. But also with, you know, one to two mechanics for the city, it was something that they anticipated would take quite a while, so taking that car. Offline and are hoping to replace that with something uh a little newer.
We, yes, go ahead, Mr. Lambert.
Uh Chief Haddon, are are we already on a current program for rotation of cars annually?
We are not. We are not. That's what we're hoping to do. We're hoping that if we can replace three. I would say hopefully four vehicles now for a few years, couple of years, three years. And we might be in shape to back that off a little bit and and maybe replace either zero or, you know, one car a year uh for a few years.
Even if we actually went to every other year, at least three or four cars every other year. Uh I'm I'm like you, these cars do get driven hard. So I mean, it's, uh I, okay, that's, I just didn't know if we were on a. Program already.
And I'm always, council member, I'm always willing, if you guys, I know that you have to do your homework and you have to make really tough decisions when it comes to. The budget and where money's going, but if you'd like to come down to the police department sometime, I can kinda show you. Uh sort of the, you know, picture of the fleet, so you can see, like I showed the finance director. Um what sort sort of our newer cars look like compared to some of the older cars and you can sort of, you know.
I I've been there. I've seen them. I understand.
So just to add to what the.
With the animal control truck, you know, I wasn't really, I, you know, I I'm not very much aware of what all we've done on. I I haven't seen any numbers. Uh I'm totally with you on a new animal control. I did it for a long period of time, you know, transporting animals across town too. During the hundred and five degree weather outside is not good for the animals either, uh in the back of the, so I I totally in with the with the driver himself. So I I'm I'm okay with, especially being a two thousand six. Um I believe that we're getting close to where we need to look at upgrading.
And just to add a bit to what the chief said about the vehicles, um and no, we're not, unfortunately, we're not on a replacement program. We have been trying to, you know, fit one, two, maybe three in when we can in a year. I don't believe we put any in this time around. We may have in Measure H. Um but in addition to just getting them on an annual schedule to replace, we would have to replace them less frequently if we could also. Add fleet to the system, to the to the program. So like he said, instead of people sharing, maybe we have a few that aren't being shared. That way they last a little bit longer too. So that's what we're hoping for with this program. Yeah.
I was actually gonna ask you about that. If we're gonna be bringing in newer uh and more officers, we've got to have vehicles for these officers to go into also.
Correct. And we did when we, when we got Measure H, we did bring in some additional vehicles because of the the officers that were being brought in with Measure H.
One of the difficulties we experienced for, I think it was in the two thousand fourteen timeframe, we bought uh. A type of vehicle that was sold as a police certified uh pursuit type vehicle, and they are maintenance hogs. They they require a lot of maintenance work to stay up and others don't. So the the Dodges or the Ford might be less maintenance driven than, say, a Chevy is. And so that guides us too along the path of wanting to replace vehicles a little more frequently because we come across some that. Man, this just is not a bad bat, this is not a good batch of police vehicles, and we end up spending a lot of money on them just trying to keep them. In the fleet up and running. So we appreciate the conversation. We do have four brand new Chevy Talos thanks to Measure H, if you wanna say that.
Okay. Uh well, so we don't have a regular program or a a regular system of so many miles. So many years of a car and 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 it gets gets replaced. And I think that's something we probably should develop a policy with that, and it would be related to the, you set the finances accordingly. It's, we know it's gonna cost this much money to to replace this this car at this mileage and this this age. And I'm sure there are plenty of formulas out there that could be used. Uh we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. I think that would be something wise to do because I I don't like seeing uh old beat up vehicles uh for our, for anybody in our city. Uh safety, health, uh efficiency, uh well-being. Um I grew up, I grew up on a farm where. We farmed, we we farmed the place with essentially what was a tractor museum. And it was, uh you know, bail awhile, repair awhile, but cut some hay, repair the repair. It's just very inefficient, and if we're gonna be efficient, I think in the long run, this be a plan we might wanna put into place. So uh between finance and PD there, and also I would recommend this, if we don't have it in place for the rest of our departments that have vehicles, I think this is something. That uh maybe it's time to to look into, because we have, you know, we know what our ongoing funding looks like. Uh we know what our ongoing expenses look like, and let let's not get caught behind the curve on this. Um let's let's stay on it and. For the safety and well-being of everybody and the efficiency of our city. So that might be something we can look into.
One one more question again, Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lambert.
This one's for actually for the fire department. On our aerial ladder truck, is it actually commissioned? Is it wa- is it running at this time? Or uh are we having issues with it?
Our uh our current ladder truck uh is currently out of service. It was red tagged uh in the our annual ladder. Uh platform and aerial device testing that we just did uh about a week and a half ago. Uh it is currently in Modesto, being repaired, being evaluated on some other issues regarding the rams, the outriggers. The ramps for the ladder itself, the uh turntable, um doing a uh getting a good idea of what the total cost would be for this uh. This equipment that's uh honestly, it's been here, we've had it for thirty years. Uh I am I'm happy to say that was something we've been wanting and 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 desired for for many years. It's just a, it's a large device. Piece of appliance, it's it's a tool that we use uh when needed, and it's it's important for us. So we we do, it is a priority for us, uh but we are looking at other means and I I can say that uh grants. We currently, for the last multiple years, we have applied to the AFG grant to replace their ladder truck. And uh this year, last year we went all the way to the end, and this year we're hoping that we're gonna be uh a little more successful and hopefully hopefully get uh. Uh be awarded that grant, which would greatly appre- would be greatly appreciative, and we've also had some support from uh elected officials uh. Both federally and state. So we're, keep our faith.
So so right now, uh if if we had a call downtown on some of the taller structures. There's probably no way that we could get the aerial truck or or. Uh if this is.
Yeah, right now, we do not have an aerial ladder in service. I would uh be calling for Mutual Aid at Watermer Set immediately uh for that type of thing, and we'd be using our ground, our ground ladders and uh. Everything we can to do, we gotta do. Currently, it hasn't, it's never been red tagged before. Um just it just had some wear, some wear from some of the pads. And uh, you know, this ladder is a thirty-year-old aerial, and uh there's some of the pads we're wearing with the ladder, and they they have to do a little more. Uh work to to keep it, keep it up to date. It is something, the the pump is deteriorated. We've uh lowered the pumping capacity of it over the years. Uh still meets meets standards, but uh uh it's a thirty-year-old piece of vehicle, piece of equipment that uh. Um is aging out, and we, it needs to be uh looked at and what we can do to get it going. And we're doing what we can with regarding the grants and some masking fundings and those things that, those things that we need to do to uh to make this a reality. And and we're gonna do what we can, but you are, you are right. Currently, in Los Angeles, we do not have an aerial in service.
So are are we gonna be able to get some numbers on that repair soon, or will we be able to, to just see what the numbers are?
Yeah, we're gonna uh, it's, they're putting this up together at the end of last week. They they turned up, I asked them to give us everything so we can. Have this conversation with fleet and figure out what our uh ultimate goal is for this thing. I'd like to get it, I'd like to get the aerial back in service, because it it all else fails, it could be a waterway that we can pump into. Uh so I think it's important that we at least have that aerial operating um until we can uh replace it. Even if the pump were to go out, we can still use the aerial if we could raise it, so that's 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 important.
All right, thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Since you're, since you're on there, Chief, uh in our uh. Conversation, we talked about the addition, little addition to uh Fire Station Two or extra staffing there. Uh I under- if you could um make it clear, I I always understand, I've always understood that it takes three. To be considered a full crew, you know, fire fire truck crew, is that correct?
Yeah, um the standards are, I gotta try to get a four-man engine company, but in reality, we, the departments are able to maintain it with. With three, and current staffing levels allows us, it's currently, three is stationed, a full staff shift would be three is stationed one. And two is stationed two. Uh by adding that third uh quarters and and improving the. Uh quarters in the facility, basically a thirty-year-old facility that uh was built as a volunteer station. We've, we've made the additions, we've made, we've, we've done some remodels to to add the dormitories and make make it as as. Efficient and useful for the oper- the day day operations for Station Two and their crew. Uh but adding the third station and some improvements with within the facility will allow us to fully staff it. Um so when we do have, when we can add the additional personnel, we can put them there and uh we're not, we're not putting them up on a cotton. And just doing what they have to do because they're they're at work. They're working, they're at work for forty-eight hours, and we need to make sure that they're are. Uh safe and comfortable and able to uh be able to respond when needed.
Absolutely. Um very good. I I strongly support that. Also strongly support getting that third full-time staffing at that station. So that when a truck leaves that station, it's fully staffed. Especially with the city, the way it's growing. I mean, we're we're scattered all over the place, and when you think about how much ground we have to cover, and and we still don't have a fire station. Uh south of Pacheco yet, and so um more efficient, uh more efficient we can help fire become. All our departments, we wanna do that. So thank you for clearing that up for me.
Thank you.
Um, well, I I like everything I'm hearing tonight. Uh I think this council has a very strong. Finger on the pulse of this community, and uh I think we know what our town wants. I think this technology, this, I think it's ERP and this other I, uh I'm not a tech, I'm not a tech guru. I know how to make stuff work when I, to do what I need to do, and that's about as far as I go with it. Uh but um this ERP and this other I system that you had to make everything more efficient, those don't seem like big numbers, but the. The return, uh the efficiency return, sounds like that's a very good investment to me. Um that idea of the sign, the downtown sign, we've been talking about downtown arch sign forever, give this town a more character, beauty. Uh I wanna, I really wanna go after the, really wanna take, promote the beauty and the glory and the history of this town. We we have so much here, and that, anything that makes a town more beautiful, inviting. Uh tells the world more about what we think about it, and uh I think that arch is great. I'd also like to see. An idea, I have an an idea about the Seventh Street Overpass that I've talked to Caltrans. Uh whether we could put a sign there or maybe you have a mural made like uh uh that would fit on both sides of that. Uh we could, you know, that that original road, Pacheco, was called Yosemite to the Sea. And that'd be kinda cool there, and especially with the new, with the splash pad going in at Pacheco. And the way I understand it, the splash pad at Pacheco Park, that's fully funded. We don't need a grant for that. It's the expansion of the park. And and then if we wanted to add more splash pads in town, I'm all for that, because this this town has a lot of kids spread out all over. But that, we, I think we decided that that would be the first place for that to go, so I'm thinking with with the arch at Sixth. Uh and the overpass at Seventh and the new stuff and uh splash pad and upgrades at Park, at Pacheco Park and. When the world drives through here and our people drive through here, they're gonna say this, this town really, really cares about its people. And really takes pride in in what it is, who it is, and I think that's important. Um these uh, these camera systems, whatever we think, whatever we can afford to improve our uh response there. Uh totally in favor of that. Like I said about vehicles, let's get a system in place. So that we don't have to think about when some ti- when time to replace something, and we have the money, it's there, we know it's gonna have to happen. Something else, and that's not so, I know, this is not so much a city funding thing, but it is a priority thing, and that is the hospital. Uh we've been talking to Sutter Hospital, um and and I know the Sutter Company took a big hit uh with some legal issues over the last couple of years. Um and so, but we need a larger hospital, um whether another hospital or expansion of this one. Whatever the city can do to pursue that. I know the idea was originally, the airport, if the airport moved. Moving the airport's not gonna be very easy. Uh the it it's not gonna be very easy at all. The most ideal place for, logistically seems, you know, to go west with an on five, but you can't go there because, uh towards five. But because you have a, oh, you have a landfill and you have lakes that are too close. The wa- bodies of water, uh they're too close to the airport to allow the airport to go any farther, much farther west, if at all. Um and then once again, uh all the the nuts and bolts, I think, have been covered pretty well in the meeting today. I'm gonna get, do a little uh, a little trim here. I'd like to see us expand our decorations and lights in the plaza. I wanna be, you know, bring lights to the plaza around the holiday time. I'd like to see the the us decorate, uh put our banners up, not just Christmas time, but. All all year round, all the seasons of the year, you know, from from Memorial Day through through the Fourth of July, have some big patriotic stuff. I, um and then um really, really, you know, do it up and also get permission from Caltrans. Hillmar does it on one sixty-five, so I don't see why we couldn't do it on 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 one fifty-two, and that is, you know, decorations along Pacheco. Uh and see what, you know, if we can get some, maybe some local folks would like to to help out financially or logistically. Um also, council, uh our new council members, I don't know if they're aware of, we have a program where each council member. Can do an informational meeting, uh I think it's every year. Uh is it every year or every two years? I think it's every year. I'd like to make sure it's at least every year. Um and what I'd like to do after the covid is over, is each council member, have their location, set their time. Uh and make it a social event. Let's bring the food trucks out, maybe some games and whatnot, so the people will come out and have a a social event. They can spend time with their council member and talk and really develop that sense of community in the various neighborhoods that each council member represents. Um on the other, on also this, and a lot of this stuff doesn't cost, this isn't gonna cost the city a lot of money. This is just stuff I'd like to see happen. Um the downtown food truck, I like to see food trucks, food truck nights, uh at least one night a week downtown. Some things have Taco Tuesdays or whatever night we choose. Uh the plaza is a beautiful area there to do that. We've, we've done it, like our police night out. Uh at the police station, block off the road, whatever. Our summer night's really beautiful, and I I think those are the kinds of things really. Help develop a sense of community. Um we know about homelessness, crime and covid, ongoing challenges there. And we're we're fighting those um perpetually, and we'll continue to do that. Um we discussed fire station staffing and equipment, police staffing and equipment. So um the, let's see, oh, one more thing. This is not a lot of money. Uh it would be about thirty, about thirty-five hundred dollars per year. Now, we, the city of Los Angeles is a member of the League of Cities. Um uh there's also another organization called the United States Conference of Mayors, who work closely in conjunction with the League of Cities. Uh it was, the John F. Kennedy chose sixteen mayors from the US conference, one of them was Fresno's mayor at the time, Harold Solon. To go with him when he went to Berlin, so this is the kind of um. This is the kind of of of, oh, presence that the US Conference of Mayors has. They're, they're lobbying firm on the ha- on behalf of cities. And their, their office is about, I think, two blocks from the United States Capitol. So if we'd like to add that to our organizations to join, um I'd like to see that happen. Because from what I see come out of the US conferences, uh they they seem to be doing a a good job in the lobbying area, I believe. Um let me see, I had my little list here, and I think I, oh, one more thing, the RDA, DLA were working very hard. I said on the board there, they canceled the last board meeting, and that that DLA to to get that closed out. Uh we need to keep on that, work on it, uh so that we can get our RDA of property, which is now DLA, uh the successor agency. And we get access to our property to use for all the stuff we can use it for. We've been sitting on that for years now, and it's there, it's just taking a long time to. To wind down, and so we've, we've been working on that, and it might cost the city a little bit of 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 money on some things, but that's not. I don't think that's big money either. Um so that's it. Keep that splash pad moving forward. And um that's about it expense-wise. So uh council, any any other council, I'll go quickly back through the council to see if there's any other in, any other questions or comments each would like to make. Mr. Jones?
Uh no other questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Uh thanks, Mr. Jones. Uh Mr. Lambert.
Uh no other comments here, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Lewis?
Okay, um I I'm just wondering if maybe we should uh try to schedule a date certain to come back. With the numbers and additional information that we're asking for, uh because I know that department heads are gonna be coming. With their budget item request, and um I don't wanna interfere with.
interfere with what they're trying to do.
So I can get this spreadsheet out to you guys tomorrow. As I stated, I apologize that I didn't do that before. I do have it. It is going to it's it. It goes with what you have. I think what will help in your decision factor is there's no there's no priorities actually assigned to it. So it won't be confusing to you. It is. It is broken down by department and then each department shows if there's an initial cost. It will have a code next to it just to kind of give you a heads up what to expect. It'll say GF, EF, IF. I put a little key on the back so you know what those mean. And it means general fund, enterprise fund, impact fees. But each each it's detailed by department. So I will take a quick minute in the morning to go over it, make sure it includes everything that is on exhibit B. And then I will shoot it over to the city manager. That way he can distribute it to each and every one of you. And please, if you feel like I left something off or if you have any questions, please feel free to call me and I'll be happy to help. Let me share this slide. This might help us decide on when we want to do this. So what I was going to ask council tonight was about budget workshops. So that would be the next thing that the budget that the council was actually participating in. As you can see from this slide here. We got the worksheet, the worksheets that Mrs. Lewis is referring from each department on at the beginning of the week, most of them. And then finances, what finance does now is develop that. So they put it all together. What we'd like to have this workshop done before is that four nineteen day because we want to go through and be able to, you know, talk to the departments about things that may need to be added or removed from their budget based on the priorities that you have set. So if we could set something between now and before that four nineteen date, that would be great. In addition to that, I believe we have no, actually that those dates work for us. The other thing that since I have you and I wanted to take into consideration is I have listed here under budget workshop is May nineteenth. The May nineteenth is a city council meeting. Now, we have the city manager and the city clerk are keeping that clear. So it's only the budget workshop, but I didn't know if that was council's priority because we did change this current workshop from a council meeting to standalone. So if you want to remove it on May nineteenth and maybe go with the May twenty seventh date, and if we feel like we need to, we could schedule something additionally. I'd kind of like to get some feedback from from council on if you're okay with having this first budget workshop during a council meeting in addition to scheduling the second one of these priority meetings.
I'm thinking we might want to wait until and we have our little priority workshop and then and then make that decision.
Sure, that's fair.
Do we want to do that workshop in in a couple of weeks or a week and a half? If we did it in a week and a half, like the Wednesday between, oh, that's planning commission. So this council, let me go through the council, one week or two weeks, do you think you'd like to work on this? Just quickly back around before I come back to Ms. Lewis. Mr. Jones?
Oh, sooner the better. One week is fine by me.
One week, okay. Mr. Lambert?
I'm okay with the week.
One week, Ms. Lewis?
I'm okay with that week.
Okay, and Mr. Yamas?
One week is fine. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So his next Monday looks pretty good then, the twelfth?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so. Lucy, do you have any issues with that date?
My time on Monday works for everybody, four o'clock.
I have to look at my calendar. Hold on.
The only thing I see is, is there a PCE board meeting that you have to attend?
The board meetings are on Thursdays. But do they have, there may be a legislative meeting. Those are those are movable. The PCE legislative meetings are movable.
So we're looking at Monday, April twelfth?
Yes. And like I said, that those PCE meetings, let's see, I there was a the PCE, they also, there was a PUC. Let me take a look. This just came in today. But they wanted to talk on PUC.
I don't know, Gary, do you know anything about that meeting? It's on your calendar.
I'm looking at the calendar. It looks like a meeting there with you, myself, Stacy and some of the staff at PCE that perhaps get caught up. We can. We can adjust that meeting if if council's available on Monday, the twelfth at four, we can.
Yeah, we can adjust that PCE meeting. There there. Yeah, let's get this council stuff done. And this needs to be done, but we're in budget. We need to get this budget done and set. And PCE, if we go, we can change the date because it doesn't look like a, it doesn't look like we're scheduled with the CP with the with the Public Utilities Director. And so that's the only thing that would make it, you know, less flexible. But I don't see
Does that date work for you, Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The other department heads, I mean, is Monday, the twelfth, okay with all of you?
I'm okay, Lucy. This is Deborah.
All the department heads are okay too?
Mason
Department heads are all good too?
Mason and Jason said yes.
Okay. Okay, everybody's nodding their head. So let's let's come back on the twelfth.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll adjourn Wednesday's meeting to April twelfth.
Yes, very good. Okay, Ms. Lewis, I interrupted you there for the for the scheduling. Did you need any more commentary you wanted there?
None right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yamas?
Thank you. I have no additional comments. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So we've had a good conversation tonight. We've got information. It's obvious that this council wants all the information it can get. So we can do the best we can for the community. We really are at a pivotal point in time coming out of the COVID. I think it's 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 been catastrophic in so in many ways. And so we're all we all want to do the best we can. So with that, if we have no further comments or conversations. Chair entertain a motion to adjourn. And we do not need to adjourn to Wednesday, do we? Lucy, okay, so it's just an adjournment. So Chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis, so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Second?
Mayor, I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilmember Tim Lewis and a second by Councilmember Lambert to adjourn the meeting. Ms. Melanie Rollco?
Jones.
Yes.
Lambert?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Yamas?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes. Meeting adjourned at five fifty two PM. Thank you, everyone. And we'll see you Wednesday. We see a lot of each other in the next couple of weeks. Thanks.